I'd like to call this the lead city council meeting to order. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, members present this evening are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Girbaugh, CO Rhodes, McClellan, Tahar, and Dillon. From city staff, we have city manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, city treasurer Bennett, wastewater treatment superintendent Schall is here, along with police chief Rennick, Parks and Rec director Scruggs, city assessor Schall is also here, as well as Mr. Gary Rubel. I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. I would note there are some supplementals that were distributed earlier tonight. One is a resolution in opposition to Public Act 269, which Clerk Royal will reference under the discussion portion of the agenda. There is a revised cleaning contract, which will appear under new business, which Mr. Campbell distributed. There is a larger sheet that was graciously provided by Parks commissioner and former city council member Jim Peters, and that will be referenced under park connectivity, the second to last item under the discussion portion of the agenda. And then I believe either earlier today or this weekend, council member Girbaugh sent out an email noting that there was an error in new business item 16-11, request to fly French flags at the four corners. That, of course, has been corrected, so I do want to make note of that. And at this time, I would seek a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Move to approve as newly submitted.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Dillon. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Girbaugh. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And we have no absences to excuse this evening, so we'll dispense with that. And we have an exciting presentation this evening, the introduction of new employees. Police chief Rennick, do you want to start the first one? I know we have at least one new police officer, as well as one of our new dispatchers here this evening, so the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce to you Mike King, who came to us. He has a bachelor's degree from Concordia College in criminal justice administration. He worked at the sheriff's department for a total of 33 years, and Stockbridge police chief for six years, and came to us with a wealth of information, and we're pleased to have him aboard. So, Mike King.
I look forward to working in your city and working with you folks in the future.
See you, Mike.
Pleasure.
Must have started in grade school.
Well, thank you for saying that.
Does Mike want to say, or Officer King like to say a few words, chief? Mike?
Just to let everyone know that, you know, I've been in law enforcement for quite a while. My career spans, you know, everything from being a corrections officer to a chief of police, and this is basically my roots, and this is what I like to do, is be out there in the car and patrol, and still love doing it, try to stay in shape so I can do it. So, again, I look forward to working in the city and meeting everybody, so, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Well, let me just interject if I may, chief. Officer King, I've already heard a number of good, positive things from not only your fellow officers, but from some members of the community. You have a pretty impressive resume, and we're very excited to have you onboard. And I'll tell you what, as a novice, you look the part, too. So, that certainly helps, but welcome aboard, we're glad to have you. I'm sorry, chief, please continue.
Thank you. And then our second employee is Christian Holler. He's a new dispatcher for us. He has his bachelor's degree from the University of Toledo in criminal justice. He's currently working towards his emergency medical technician license. He worked for the sheriff's department dispatch for a little over two years. He was also a Cedar Point police officer during the summer of 2011, and he was also one of our police cadets for five years. Christian?
Welcome in your new official capacity.
You don't have to say anything if you don't want to, but we want to provide you the opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not the best public speaker, but I'm better behind the phone, I guess. But, thank you for the welcome, and I'm enjoying my time so far.
Good. We appreciate your commitment to Celine, look forward to working with you. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, mayor.
Chief, thank you. Mr. Rubel, would you like to introduce your new colleague?
Well, the newest employee on the staff side here of City Hall is Adnan Perry, who is our new code officer, and we're certainly glad to have him onboard. We've had one week of orientation, and things have worked out quite well, and he brings in new ideas and lots of energy. He also has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Eastern Michigan, and has experienced performing code enforcement in the city of Dearborn. So, that's Adnan Perry.
Sylvie, yeah, thank you. Or Mr. Sylvie, as we like to call him. Good to see you again, my friend.
Adnan? Be kind to me next time you see me out there.
Would you like to say anything?
We welcome you here this evening.
Thank you so much.
Okay, well. A code enforcement officer, a few words. Well, let me just say, and Mr. Rubel, you can correct me, his first official day was a week ago Monday, is that correct?
Right.
Okay. Well, obviously reinstating the code enforcement officer was a priority of mine. When you first interviewed with some of my colleagues here at City Hall, they were very impressed by your resume, your professionalism, and your passion for the job. I've been impressed by your professionalism and your rapport with some of our other colleagues here at City Hall. I know you're going to do great things, and we welcome you aboard. Thank you so much. Okay. If there's nothing further, then we will proceed to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required, to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll proceed to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve as submitted.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Girbaugh. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-11, request to fly French flags at the four corners. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 6, 2016 memo request from Jamie Amend, I hope I pronounced that correctly, and to approve or not to approve the request to fly the French flags at the four corners from February 8 through February 25, 2016.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Thank you, councilmember Girbaugh. Was that a second by councilwoman Tahar?
Yes, it was.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk Royal, do you want to begin or start with this?
No.
No? Okay. I know we have some citizens here who are involved with this, and we welcome you here this evening. Ladies and gentlemen, do you have some prepared statements you'd like to read?
Yes.
Well, we would welcome that. The floor is yours.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Sarah McNally.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Maya Dala.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Spencer Dickinson.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Blake Coy.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Blaze Bussos.
Bonsoir, je m'appelle Zoe Zimberwick.
Very good.
We are a part of the Celine Area Schools French American Student Exchange Program. From February 11 to February 25, we will be hosting students from France in our homes.
There are a total of 26 Celine students and families participating in this exchange.
These 26 students are coming from Beyy, Roman Villier, France. This is a city just outside of Paris.
Our French guests will be here to experience our daily life in Celine.
In June, many of us will travel to France to stay with their families, so we may experience the French way of life for two weeks.
We are here to kindly request from the Celine City Council to have the French flags hung at the four corners in downtown Celine in honor of our guests.
If possible, we would like the flags to be hung from February 8 to February 29.
We thank the Celine City Council for considering this request.
Very good, excellent.
Excellent.
Why don't you hang tight, just in the event that there are any questions, although I don't think there will be, but let me compliment you on that presentation. You know, there's a number of adults in this community who could take a lesson from these young people. It's always good to be prepared, and you had a message, a narrative, that was very clear and concise, and we appreciate that. And this is a very, very noble thing that you're doing, hosting and befriending some young people from across the pond in France, and we look forward to their visit as well. I understand they'll be touring, visiting City Hall when they come, is that correct?
Yes.
Excellent, well, we look forward to that. Are there any questions for our guests this evening? Mr. CO, please.
As part of two other sister city relationships with two other foreign nations, namely Wales and Germany, we always scratch our heads and try and think about how are we going to get younger people involved in our organizations. So, I'm really encouraged to see this youth group here, who's also involved in an overseas relationship with French citizens. So, thank you very much, I encourage you to continue this.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, councilmember CO. Any other questions or comments? No? Very good. Thank you all, we appreciate your time very much. If there's no further discussion, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by councilmember Girbaugh, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Thank you again, we appreciate your time this evening. Stay warm. We move on to new business item 16-12, this is Reinhardt Renewal Agreement for 207 Monroe Street. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 6, 2016 memo from city manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve an extension of the agreement through September 30, 2016, for the 207 Monroe Street property listing with the Charles Reinhardt Company. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilmember Girbaugh. Mr. Campbell, do you want to start on this issue?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Darby Colano from Reinhardt is also here, if there's any questions. As you all may know, the 207 property that Reinhardt's been representing for the city, the agreement with High Meadows LLC for the proposed residential redevelopment of that property has been completed, however, the property will not be closed on until the due diligence is completed by High Meadows with the various approvals through planning commission and city council. So, that's going to take probably six, seven, eight months to get done, and so need to continue to be in agreement with the Reinhardt Company, with Darby, and then also her partner, Rick Magnum, until such time as we close. So, that's why we've asked to extend it out to the end of September.
Very good. Ms. Colano, do you care to make any comment this evening? You don't need to, but we want to provide you the opportunity if you'd like to.
I thought it'd be nice just to give a quick update. Now that we have an agreement, I asked Damian just to kind of let me know what was going on, so I can report to you. He has ordered the survey, and that's planned to start this week, depending on weather, so now winter is here. And as soon as he's got the survey, they'll be submitting for rezoning, so that's kind of the plan that's going to be going on, so.
Very good. Any questions for Ms. Colano? Darby, appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you.
Any questions for city manager Campbell? How about comments or discussion? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
A comment, and that is that it has become increasingly difficult to get a property, a vacant property, developed, and I appreciate the support and the effort that the city has put into working with Damian Farrell and High Meadows to get this project to come to fruition. It will mean another, I keep forgetting the number, but about 20 more families who will be able to live within our community, and shop in our downtown, and partake in all the things that we have available, and to volunteer. Looking forward to having more volunteers.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Any additional discussion, comments? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by councilmember Girbaugh, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-13, this is property exemption requirements. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the December 21, 2015 memo from assessor Schall, and to approve or not to approve the 2016 property exemption guidelines as recommended by the Celine Tax Board of Review. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Thank you, councilmember Girbaugh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilwoman Tahar. We have assessor Schall with us this evening. Ms. Schall, do you care to make any comment?
Thank you.
Thank you.
The poverty exemption guidelines that you have before you, we often refer to them as a hardship exemption, provides property tax relief on an annual basis for low-income households. It is income-based, we do keep all of the information confidential, but we are required by state law to receive income tax returns. We have been helping out families that are very low-income, stay in their homes. I say that it's an annual requirement because, in some cases, the situation may change, and it was actually a very good thing back when the economy was doing poorly. We had quite a few that applied and were approved, and were able to turn themselves around by going back to school, getting a degree in something else, and so it worked exactly as it is intended. The applicants are required to apply each year, in case the circumstances can change. We did go through a very thorough review and overhaul of the guidelines in 2014 by our attorney, Nick Curcio, so I feel like we have a very thorough product, and it's a very helpful product.
Excellent, thank you, assessor Schall. Are there questions for our city assessor? Mr. Girbaugh, please.
Just quick, how is the trend? Do we see more people applying, less people?
Less.
Less? Great.
We had seven. Seven apply, and actually, oh, seven were approved in 2015, but that is down from probably, at the peak, maybe about two, I'm going to say 13, 14.
Okay, thank you. Additional questions for our city assessor? Catherine, thank you very much. Appreciate your time. Any subsequent discussion on this issue? No, then it's been properly moved by councilmember Girbaugh, seconded by councilwoman Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-14, dual odor scrubber. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 5, 2016 memo from wastewater treatment superintendent Schall, and to approve and authorize or not to approve the repair work to the existing dual scrubber in the amount of $29,384. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
And to authorize, Mayor Protem?
To authorize.
Thank you, sir, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. McClellan. I'll get you on the next one, councilwoman Dillon. Superintendent Schall, would you like to make a comment on this?
Yes, I'm requesting money to fix the original do-all scrubber that was installed in 1996. It was originally installed outside. When we had the most recent odor abatement work, we constructed a building to house both scrubbers. This scrubber's been in service for 20 years now. It's made out of PVC material, and therefore is susceptible to cracks and aging, and this money should basically replace all the moving parts.
Very good. There are questions for superintendent Schall? Councilwoman Tahar?
Yes, a question about the quote. I noticed that one of the items is not included in what you're proposing, and that's item B, continuous improvement, and I wondered what was the background to that?
Well, the continuous improvement portion consists of basically two alarms that would be installed in some, a low-level alarm and a high-level alarm. And in the 20 years that's been running, we've never had a low-level problem, and the scrubber's designed to overflow, so I don't see the need, and it seems exorbitantly expensive for what we get out of it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councilwoman Tahar. Additional questions? Let me ask a couple, while some of my colleagues may be pondering additional questions, Mr. Schall. When I reviewed your memo, well, I had it just a moment ago, perhaps you could talk to us, the quote that you received, the organization also provided you, thank you, with a quote to replace the current scrubber at an approximate amount of $60,000. So, granted, I'm a novice in this, but we've got a scrubber that's 20 years old, what is the average lifespan on a piece of equipment like this?
The PVC is resilient to chemical corrosion, but I don't really know what the answer is for it in long term. It seems pretty structurally sound, except for the items that need some attention. The problem is with getting a new scrubber is, the cost of the scrubber may be around $60,000, and that was a quote from the vendor of the do-all system that we have. The problem in the cost would be in retrofitting the existing building, electrical and ductwork to the new scrubber. The $60,000 is probably only half the price.
Okay, all right. I just didn't want the city to be in a position of investing approximately $30,000, and then two, three years later, you know, having to purchase a brand-new scrubber, and then, you know, as you just stated, $60,000 being really half of what it would cost to get that installed and in operation. Can you talk for the record, because as you know, and my council colleagues know, we've spent a lot of time in the last couple of months on some of these odor issues, what specifically this equipment does, and how investing approximately $30,000 will improve efficiencies and our ability to manage and mitigate some of the smells?
The problem with the do-all scrubber is that it consists of several sections stacked on top of each other. The internal bulkhead on the top section had failed. So, what that does is it basically shorts out the system. It doesn't draw as much, because air, like water, will go to the path of least resistance. So, if you open your window, your furnace is going to pull from outside versus your vents. Well, that's basically the situation we had with the do-all scrubber. With the internal bulkhead gone, it could not pull it or aff like it should.
Okay. And then my final question, assuming that this motion passes this evening, how quickly can these repairs be made?
Well, I will call tomorrow morning, if it's approved, and there is a lag time, four to six weeks to fabricate. Nothing's off the shelf, everything has to be fabricated.
Okay. But obviously, we'll move expeditiously to get this done, because of the benefit that we'll have to many of the adjacent property owners. Okay. Mr. Schall, I appreciate your work on this. I know this was in addition to the scope of work that we're currently doing at the wastewater treatment plant, but I think it's indicative of how serious we take these odor issues.
Well, additional work we just had completed was, we did remove the structure above the splitter box, so we can seal that off now.
Okay.
We also are looking at plant processes, and I think we found a problem that we're taking care of. It will alleviate itself when we get new sand filters. I think we are simply hydraulically adding to the problem, because of the failing equipment.
Okay. Well, again, I appreciate your work on this. Additional questions for our wastewater treatment superintendent? Bob, thank you for your time. Any subsequent discussion on this motion? Mr. Rhodes, please.
I'd just like to say that I obviously am in support of this motion, and I suspect that most of my other council members will be also. We've had these periodic issues with odor emanating from that plant, and while this may not be a 100% solution, it's good to see that we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anything further? No, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by councilwoman McClellan, to acknowledge receipt and to approve and authorize. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 14-134, this is change order number one for wastewater treatment plant improvement phase two. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 6, 2016 memo from city superintendent engineer Rubel, and to approve or not to approve change order number one, an adjustment of the construction contract with an increase of $30,523.38. Is there a motion?
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by councilman CO. We have city superintendent Gary Rubel here, we have our friend and consultant from Tetra Tech, Brian Rubel here, and of course, Mr. Schall may also care to comment on this. Gentlemen, do you want to come up to the podium now? The floor is yours, and of course, when each one of you has an opportunity to speak, or after each one of you has an opportunity to speak, we'll open it up for questions from the dais. Go ahead, Gary.
Okay, thank you, mayor. In the packet, you'll find there was a staff cover letter, which just gave an overview and mention of some prior considerations before it was put on the agenda here, and gives some other insight into what those six elements are. The recommendation, of course, is for approval, because we have performed our due diligence with Tetra Tech staff, and also through Bob's facility down there. And then on the attachments, you'll see there's a photo page that shows some of the items that are shown, there's one item in the change order. A couple of items are items that would be on order, so there's no pictures, no installation yet. And then, of course, the other attachment is breakdown from Tetra Tech from Mr. Brian Rubel, showing the six items on the change order, and also then the justification page that gives some finer detail, items on items one through six.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Gary Rubel. Mr. Brian Rubel, do you care to make any comment at this time?
I guess my role here would be to explain any of the technical details of the changes that were made or are being contemplated. There are six of them, would you like a brief summary of each of the six, or?
If you can keep it brief, I think that would be beneficial not only for council, but also for the members of the audience, and those who may be reading about or watching us maybe at home.
I will do my best to keep it brief. The first item is additional insurance that was requested of the contractor. The bid documents that were used had recently had a change, where the city, and these are industry standard documents, the owner of the project and the new documents was made responsible for purchasing insurance, and this is actually a liability policy. If the contractor was negligent in any way, it would protect the city for those actions. Upon awarding the contract with the contractor, the contractor asked the discussion, are you sure that you can, that isn't something you want us to provide? Mr. Campbell and others contacted the city's insurance carrier, and the insurance carrier did request that that policy be added to the contract, so that is the cost of that policy. The second item is 36 bearings, and it's an upgrade from the bearing that the city had used historically out there. It's a new product that came out, actually, we were contacted a day or two before we received bids. It was too short of a period of time to get it into the bids, but we did do some research after bids were taken. This enhanced bearing is promoted a longer design life, less maintenance for the staff, and at a few hundred extra dollars per bearing, it certainly seemed, after our research, that that was money well-spent. So, it's just a heavy-duty type bearing, and these are on your very heavy rotating shafts that do a lot of the legwork of the treatment. So, it keeps these shafts rotating and balanced and supported. The third item is an item that we talked about after we received the bids last spring. There is a digester tank that periodically, intermittently accepts sludge, and in There is a digester tank that periodically, intermittently accepts sludge, and in kind it rejects some air. That air has potential to be odorous, and so as we talked last spring, adding a treatment canister on that would help clear up any smells associated with that. So item three is the addition of that canister. Item four, for those that can recall the plant, near the digester itself, there is, there was a very settled concrete area. The sidewalks were slanted and sloped, and the project had a lot of structural improvements around there to really square away that area. It looks fantastic. It's done. There was a, when it was laid out, I think we just tried to be a little too frugal. We left a little piece of older sidewalk to remain, not to be replaced, and when we got everything set up, it just kind of looked odd to spend so much money making this area nice and trying to work around this older piece of sidewalk. So for a $700 change, we did go ahead and change out that sidewalk, so it looks much better just having that old piece of sidewalk out of there. The fifth item really is not related to this project, but it, you know, it was in the same area we were working. We got a piece of sidewalk excavated, there was gas smell, natural gas, and the city had had a history of repairing this main, and when we dug a little deeper, or the contractor dug a little deeper, it was in very poor condition. It was corroding, and it was just a safety issue. The right thing to do was to go ahead and replace that pipe. So we replaced it, and we poured the concrete over the top of it, and hopefully it's out of mine now for a generation or better. And then the last item is actually a deduct from the contract. So the first five are adds. The sixth one is a savings. One of the main components of the project is a filter. One of the last stages in the treatment process will be to run the wastewater through a filter. And between the time we bid the project and, or designed the project, we bid it, the contractor got started, the manufacturer of that filter actually changed their model. It's like, you know, a car change. You ordered a 2015, by the time you got your order in, they were already making 2016. So we, they contacted us about that change, and contractually, any substitutions from what was bid, the vendor is responsible for the cost of evaluating those changes to make sure that it's an appropriate product. So Tetra Tech spent several days of our time to evaluate the new filter. We had the manufacturer come in, Mr. Skull and his staff came over to our office. We really vetted that to make sure that the changes that were made at the new model were changes that we were comfortable with. And the end result was we thought there was good value in accepting the newer model. So the extra time spent to evaluate that, it comes off of what the contractor bid. So that's a saving, well, it's kind of a net, net zero to the city. We have some costs that you are paying, but it comes off the contractor's fee, so. So the shortest summary I could give was...
It was still short but thorough. We appreciate that. Mr. Skull, do you care to make any comment?
Just real quick.
Please.
As Brian had said, we had several leaks on that gas line, so it was pretty much, I'm kind of glad they had to replace it. We had DTEN to dig it up earlier in the season, and they repaired portion of it, just in time they had the rest of it broke. As far as the bearings go, I just want to clarify, it's $340 apiece more, and these are an upgraded bearing for a damp environment. They're pressed on hydraulically. In the past, the bearings that we replace in-house are the ones that fail the most and the quickest, and I think it's because we cannot, we simply don't have the equipment or the expertise to replace them ourselves with any great efficiency, considering the shaft weighs about 70,000 pounds. It's very hard to work with. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Thank you, gentlemen. What questions do we have for either Mr. Gary Rubel, Mr. Brian Rubel, or Mr. Skull?
My questions were answered in the course of the conversation.
Excellent. Anything else? Mr. Girba, please.
Just quick, who's the manufacturer of the bearings?
They're, in chaos, isn't it?
So they're United States-made?
I don't know anymore. They did have a facility in Ann Arbor, but they closed that, and I believe there's still one in Indiana or Illinois. I can't swear to that. I don't know.
Yeah, just I've known some Chinese stuff to really go by, so.
Okay. Anything else? Gentlemen, appreciate your time very much. Any subsequent discussion on this? No? Then we'll proceed to vote. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Rhodes, seconded by Councilmember Seo to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business items, new business item 16-16, fund balance policy clarification. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 6, 2016 memo from City Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve the changes to the City of Saline Fund Balance Policy as submitted.
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Let's do, okay, acknowledge receipt first by Councilmember Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahr. Obviously, this was a assignment that we delegated to our city treasurer. Ms. Bennett, do you want to talk about the change, and then also maybe for our audience's benefit, talk just briefly about how this fund balance policy came about three years ago now?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
So just real, a real brief background is that the city does tend to have, the city's goal is to have a fund balance. Sometimes those fund balances are reserved or restricted to go from one current year to another current year to, as an earmark, per se, to continue to fund a project. The goal of the city was to get a policy to establish what is a safe, I hate this term, rainy day fund or available fund balance, what was safe and what, you know, how many days could a city function in the event that all of our taxes or whatever, you know, that we could not collect any more revenue? And so we did some research and created this fund balance policy. During that time, we had many copies of this going back and forth between the current council and myself and the different departments. And GASB, the Government Accounting Standings Board, also changed their terminology, terminology unrestricted, unassigned, so there was some cleanup that we needed to do. So I went back and looked, and I think the purpose that the council had at the work meeting when we started this policy was to set a target for the money that isn't assigned. We have a number of assigned pots of money that go our pledge to a commitment already. And so the idea behind this policy was to come up with a 15% to 20% unassigned, which means that in the event that revenues and expenditures don't match, we have available funds to cover those costs. And so with going through and cleaning up, we did replace the unrestricted. We tried to keep it all with unassigned, and in addition to your memo, I did find two more in the last paragraph that needed to be changed also. So under unassigned fund balance on the last page, in the first paragraph, third word, that would also be changed to unassigned, and in the last paragraph, third word, that would also be changed to unassigned. Did I get them all, Linda?
Those are the ones I found, yes.
So that's kind of a quick rundown as to what we assigned the policy for, and then, you know, when we addressed it this year, we kind of came across some differences, so we thought we would clean it up and keep consistent throughout the policy, and that's the purpose of this memo.
Thank you. We appreciate your work on this. As I've stated on numerous occasions in the past, this document is important. I think it reaffirms our support for a healthy fund balance and enumerates that essentially in policy. So while some people might dismiss it as purely a symbolic document, I think it's more than that. I think it's a reflection of our values and our strategic financial approach to managing and conserving resources. What questions do we have for our city treasurer? Mr. Girba, do you have some questions or comments?
No, from my perspective, it's great to have the definitions identified for us as a council to understand how we categorize the commitments that we have moving forward and to more prospectively be allowed to give the information to the public so that they understand how we're, what we're maintaining it for and not necessarily just keeping a fund for what people would look at as a slush fund. The idea is that we actually are designating it and trying to protect ourselves from future potential problems.
Thank you, sir. Anything further, Mayor Protem Rhodes, please?
On the backside here, the last underlying section has order of expenditure of funds, spending prioritization, but there's nothing under that?
Oh, it should have. It doesn't say funding the MERS Pension Fund, assigned for capital projects, the OPEB Trust and assigned to pay down debt, including...
Not on mine. Just blank.
I prefer blank.
But if we're going to approve this as a fund policy, we should have all of that information there, I believe.
It wasn't on the attachment?
Not on mine either, no. But I know that it was on the enumerated policy that we adopted some years ago.
It was, it was, okay, I thought it was just my packet. It was in the electronic version of the council packet, the second page of the fund balance policy, but the second page was not apparently in anyone's.
I'm sorry, my...
In the hard copy, right?
My printed copy has it all there, so do you want to read it?
Well, you've got a special printed copy.
I will definitely make you copies since I know that.
And that is a change and revise from what was adopted and created, you know, what was that, 2013?
It says the change is from unassigned, unrestricted, et cetera. That's what's in red there in that section.
Are you clear on that now, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, as long as we do get a printed copy.
I will send that out.
Thank you.
Anything further for our city treasurer?
Just clarifying for myself.
Oh, yes, please.
When we say order of expenditure of funds, have we always used that category or that title?
That title of...
My concern is, we recommend these ideas, but I don't want us to be held to the fact that one, two, three, four is how we would allocate that fund balance, because there may be years where we don't necessarily want it to go towards one thing because we have a priority over something else.
It's a suggestion. It says that it is a suggestion.
Yeah, and I'm just trying to make sure that the suggestion thing has continued to be...
I didn't change it from our original draft. So if we want to change that, I'm open to that suggestion, but it hasn't been changed since the original.
I think it's pretty clear that it's a suggestion.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, because when we mentioned it, I didn't see it on our other copy, so.
And if I recall correctly, again, that was two and a half years ago now, perhaps longer, I think that issue came up, that we wanted some flexibility within that section.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we maintain that.
Yep, yep, I agree. Ms. Tahr, please.
Yes, well, okay, so, thank you, Joe, I found one more typo.
Oh, I need my red cap and pen.
No, it's actually on the first page. I think in definition number two, you mean millages, not mileages?
It has the word on.
Yes, I know.
Can you, that's page two or page one?
No, it's page one.
Page one, which paragraph?
Under fund balance, the definitions, definition number two, the last word is mileages, but it should be millages.
To millage, dedicated millage. Dedicated millage.
We only, there's only, currently, excuse me, real quick, just to be clear, currently what's on the floor is a motion to acknowledge receipt, not to approve any changes. So if it's council's prerogative to hold off and do this at a subsequent meeting, that would be perfectly fine. Got it? So I want to be clear, what we're considering right now is just to acknowledge receipt. Anything further, Ms. Tahr? No? Okay. Anything else for our city treasurer? Thank you, Joe, we appreciate your time. Any subsequent discussion then on the motion made by Councilmember Girba, seconded by Councilwoman Tahr to acknowledge receipt? No? Proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Does anyone care to offer a subsequent motion? No?
I move to postpone consideration of the revised policy statement to the next meeting, when we can have a new copy.
Second.
So let me just be very clear, because when you offer a motion to postpone, you should usually give a date certain. So to postpone consideration to our next meeting on February the first?
February 1st, yes.
You're still comfortable seconding that, Councilmember Seo?
Yes, sir.
Everyone clear on the motion? Okay. It's been properly, this motion offered on the floor by Councilwoman Tahr, seconded by Councilman Seo, to postpone consideration of the changed City of Saline Fund Balance Policy to our February 1, 2016 council meeting. Is there any discussion on that? No? Then proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously, and again, that will appear then as an unfinished business item on the February 1 agenda. Thank you again, Ms. Bennett. We move on to new business item 16-17, request CARES grant to construct an entrance to the Salt Springs Park. This is a pretty exciting development. A motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 7, 2016 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs and to approve or not to approve the request to apply for a CARES grant in the amount of $10,000 for the construction of a walkway entrance to Salt Springs Park.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Thank you, Councilmember Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Ms. Scruggs, would you care to make a comment on this?
Well, as always, we're requesting permission to apply for a CARES grant. $10,000 is the max that we're allowed to apply for, and we've been working on this project slowly, trying to, trying to come up with a good, safe way to get the public into Salt Springs Park. So this would be a good opportunity. The next fund, grant funding cycle is coming up at the end of January. So we would, we'll, I'll be working with our superintendent Rubel. He came up with some, some cost estimates and things that need to be done, so it's a little bit more than what the $10,000 is, but we do have some money put aside in the CIP for this fiscal year towards Salt Springs Park. So I think it's a good project. At least we need to apply for it, and hopefully if we can get some of that money, we can leverage our money with it.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Scruggs. Are there questions for our Parks and Rec Director?
That was the question, what are we leveraging in terms of $10,000 from the grant, but what do you anticipate total cost to do this?
Total cost for the pathway entrance is over $10,000. It is, actually, not much more than $10,000. Actually, $10,100 is what he has budgeted. However, that's just a walkway. We also have started looking at putting together a lot, a parking lot, so some public parking spaces, and that project is about $20,600. So a lot plus an entrance would be about $34,000.
And how will this be coordinated with the waste treatment? Because I know that was kind of the issue with the fence and all that being put in, is it going to happen at the same time, or? Because I know there was concerns about trying to phase that in earlier, and I'm concerned of something getting put in and taken out versus something being...
No, I'm sure it will be coordinated. I'm not, I'm not real familiar with the project phasing and everything. Maybe Mr. Campbell could help.
Sure, please. Excuse me. So a couple of things. One, the fencing certainly would occur first. That's a priority. The other thing that I don't believe that Ms. Scruggs has the most up-to-date estimate, because the estimate that she has is for a limestone-type base walkway, which we could certainly do that for short term, but it's about with a paved, whether it be concrete, I think the estimate was concrete, and we also will have to put up a railing because it's right there along the river's, riverbank. So it's closer, around 40, a little over $40,000 total. We do have the 15 for matching in the budget, along with, along with the 10 that we would be asking for. If we were able to do that, we'll certainly be able to do at least the, for the short term, the limestone base with the railing. Again, as you would expect, the expense climbs when you go with the paving of the pathway. So, but, so that, but, so the fence would incur first, and then once we, that was all squared away, then we would be able to lay that, because there are some objects that we need to go around and incorporate them into the pathway, if you will, that are actually part of the, part of the wastewater treatment plant process.
Yeah, and I just wanted to know what the timing of that is so that we don't have to spend something and take it out and then have to put it back again. So we've got that all planned out. I appreciate that. I appreciate that. So the idea would be to complete this, be this summer, this coming summer, or?
Well, this round is due at the end of, or at the end of January. The CARES board probably won't meet until February sometime. And then after the CARES board meets, then it goes to a board meeting, school board meeting. So my guess is, the funds wouldn't be available until later this summer, anyway.
So possibly in fiscal year?
Correct. That's typically how it's phased out.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Nothing further, Councilmember Girba?
Not at this time.
All right. Additional questions for Ms. Scruggs? Mr. CEO, please.
Yes, just as the new person, so I understand completely. We're talking about doing this in a phased approach, then, so that the monies that we have available, the $15,000 and the current capital improvement plan, the $10,000 grant, if we're successful and achieving it, would be used to fund the first several steps, the fencing, the limestone base, the railing. And then, as money became available at subsequent time, they'd finally do the paving? Is that, is that what I heard?
Possibly. I mean, that could be, no, well, I mean, that's, so depending on, just like with any project, depending on what, you know, we bid it out, and, you know, how favorable or unfavorable the bids may come back. So as far as the fencing, just to be clear, that is part of the wastewater treatment plant project. So that's not included, that's, there's no cost for this project that we're talking about right now, that you all are considering right now. So, yeah, so that certainly could be where we would put in the limestone path, along with the railing now, if, again, if the bids, we probably would do it, we would bid it with alternates, meaning alternate A, you know, with everything, and then B with just the limestone. So then, if bids were not favorable, then we could come back and do that, as you mentioned, as you said, in a phased approach.
Anything further, Councilmember CEO? Thank you, sir. Mr., let me go to Ms. McClellan first, and then Mr. Girba.
The limestone, is that just for the walkway, or is that a limestone parking situation as well, or?
Well, I'm just referring to the pathway.
Okay. So the limestone, we're not talking about having area for parking?
Well, we're working on that, but we don't, we don't have any, I mean, as Ms. Scruggs alluded, we do have a cost estimate of what it might look like, but we need to secure, secure the property, and working on a possible easement with the current property owner.
Anything further, Councilwoman McClellan? Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Girba?
Will we be available for any other funding cycles from either the county or the state for this?
Not for the state. However, county, I believe you can, they don't really have a grant funding cycle. I'm not sure if that, this is up their.
I didn't know, from all the non-motorized transportation and trails and such, that we might be able to.
Right. Possibly some other trail type of funding. I don't know of any right offhand. But definitely, if we were able to get the $10,000 from CARES, we could leverage that against another grant, if that became available.
Okay, good.
I should know a little bit more. We, our state conference is coming up in February, and they have a lot of information from the DNR and trails and greenways there.
And I'm sure our county commissioner, Alicia Ping, will be more.
I think she should be able to help us.
Helpful for us, too, so, thanks.
Anything further? Ms. Dillon, please.
Can you just clarify what a walkway entrance is? Like, how long this is? Is this the length of the park? Is this just at the entrance to the park?
I'd be happy to, if you like. So, so this would be, so we're the entrance, the current entrance to the wastewater treatment plant. So if you can, the fencing, we're going to have, so there's, of course, then the river to the south. So in between, we don't currently have the security fencing up, but it will be installed. And so then, it'll run from approximately where the gate is currently, going into the wastewater treatment plant, and run all the way back to the fence, to the, so it'll run all the way to the east, to the fence, the separate, there's a current fence that does separate the wastewater treatment plant from the salt springs. So, I don't know exactly, how far is that, Bob?
420.
400 feet?
20 feet.
420 feet.
So it'd go along that fencing?
Actually, I'm sorry, 470.
Is that what you're?
The fence.
Because I'm directionally challenged right now, when you're talking east and north and south. So just.
Okay. So if you're looking at, if you're looking at the drive, as you're looking at the entrance, the fence is going to be on your left as you go, as you go the length, as you walk forward, right? And the river will be on your right.
Okay.
So there'll be a, there'll be a railing along the edge of the riverbank there, it's fairly steep right there. So there'll be a railing, and then in between the railing and the fence will be this pathway. And that, and this pathway would just get in, get into the park.
Okay.
Does that make better sense?
Yes, thank you.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you.
Anything further for Director Scruggs? Carla, thank you, appreciate it.
Sorry, wasn't more help?
No, no, no. Appreciate your presentation and your memo, and your work on this. Any additional discussion or comments regarding the motion that's on the floor? And again, to clarify, the motion that's on the floor was made by Councilmember Girba, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to acknowledge receipt of the January 7th, 2016 memo from Parks and Rec Director Scruggs. If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Does anyone care to offer a subsequent motion? The subsequent motion would be a motion to approve or not to approve the request to apply for a CARES grant in the amount of $10,000 for the construction of a walkway entrance to Salt Springs Park.
Move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Girba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman McClellan. Any discussion? Councilwoman CEO?
A question. If we apply for this grant and we're successful, how long do we have to have that money secured before we need to take action to spend it?
Is it a year? It's a year.
And I guess the genesis of my question is this. If, in fact, we are successful and we decided to move forward with something, and we got some bids in, and they were over what we thought was reasonable to spend, how long period could we actually make sure we still had that money in an attempt to either alter the plan or do something different? So one year?
Right. Unless, unless there's some extraordinary circumstances that you could request additional time.
Thank you. Mayor Jim Rhodes?
I was just to add to that, that all of the CARES grants that I'm familiar with that have needed to be extended when requested prior to the end of that first year have always been extended another year.
And I would echo that, Councilwoman CEO. In fact, if I recall correctly, Mayor Protem Rhodes was a CARES board member at one time, and subsequent to his tenure on the CARES board, I was a CARES board member at one time. And I do not recall, although it was not common, I can recall a few occasions where entities and organizations asked for an extension, and they were almost always, if not exclusively, If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved again by Councilmember Girba, seconded by Councilwoman McClellan, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 16-18, cleaning service contract. This motion will be revised somewhat. The last line, Covenant Cleaning will be removed, and Tiscano and Associates LLC will be inserted. The motion will read, "A motion to acknowledge receipt of the January 8th, 2016 memo from City Manager Campbell, and to approve or not to approve the agreement for janitorial services for the Saline Recreation Center Municipal Building and DPW Building with Tiscano's and Associates LLC through June 30th, 2016."
Move to acknowledge receipt and to approve.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Tahar. Mr. Campbell, you have been the individual that has been working on this, and you're the one who brought the motion forward. Would you like to go over your report dated January the 8th?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, over the last year, well, let me back up. So we've had the same cleaning services folks for six or eight years now. I guess this would have been about the eighth. We had the original, when we replaced back in '09, I think it was. And they did a tremendous job, and so well, that three years ago, rather than going out for bid, we renewed for another four years. We had, we made some changes to the structure of the agreement, because we, for some cost savings, instead of five days a week at City Hall, we're three days, and those types of things. So between some minor adjustments in that, as well as some, they gave us some discounts for extending the agreement, and things were fine. But this last year, it has been continuing, continual battle to get good service, whether it's doing, doing the job satisfactorily, or even not showing up. And so, and we have, and I call, is our team, which our team consists of, of course, Carla Scruggs, at our rec center, which I affectionately refer to as the, our flagship, because, I mean, certainly, it's important that all of our, all of our community assets, our City Hall and DPW and Rec Center are kept clean, and in great order. However, with our rec center, if it's not clean, we lose members. And so we know, that's the last thing we want to do, of course. And so every once in a while, there might be a hiccup here or there, but when Carla started bringing things to my attention, that's when we really, I mean, not that we didn't take everything else, other things of value, but, and they were a priority. But so we sat down at least four times, at least, if not, I believe it's more than that, with the owners, and said, here are the things that need to be corrected. And of course, we get the yes, yeah, we get a lot of empty promises. And so finally, after working with our team, again, Carla, Chief Rinnick, and Jeff Fordice at DPW, that's our, and myself, that's our team, our collective team, that works on trying to manage this agreement a little bit, but depending on the building. But any case, we got together and said, we just, unfortunately, we believe the best thing to do is to cancel the contract and look for somebody else long-term. But in the meantime, we get, well, we want to work on our requests for proposals, our FP language, we need to bring someone in temporarily. And so we have Cornelius Crawford, who is here in the audience, that certainly is happy to answer any questions as well. But he was one of the finalists back in '09, and of course, they're Saline-based, the Tiscano, both names are registered, are registered, Tiscano and Associates, as well as the Covenant Cleaning Building Maintenance Services. And the reason for the request of the change is that they typically use the Tiscano and Associates more often. Is that, that's correct? Correct. So, anyway, so they were one of the finalists, and I know that Cornelius was certainly being his, this is his hometown, right? I mean, that, I mean, is now, but, I mean, he considers it his hometown, and he wants to, he's always wanted to do work with the city, and very proud to do that. So I called him and said, this is, this is, these are the issues we're having, what do you think? And he said, without hesitating, he says, I'll, I'll match whatever they're doing, you know, at least for the short term, with opportunity to bid on the long term. And so we met with our team last week, and Tiscano and Associates went through everything, and I know our team is excited that, to move forward, at least for the short term, anyway. But, so we have, I have sent a letter to, to our current cleaning services company, letting them know that they're giving them essentially a little more than 30 days' notice, February 15th would be their last day. The reason I'm coming to you right now is that I don't know if they'll want to fulfill that obligation till the 15th, if they want to leave early. Either way, I mean, we need to have someone either from the, you know, beginning on February 16th until the, until June 30th, or, or if they leave, decide to leave early, then we need somebody then, too. In our next meeting, the next city council meeting is not until February 1st, so if they were to leave, walk off, the job, as they say, prior to the February 1st meeting, I wouldn't have time to have an agreement in place, so. But the other, the other thing is, this would not be signed with Tiscano Associates until such time as everything was squared away with our current cleaning contractor.
Before we open it up for questions, Mr. Crawford, would you care to make any comment this evening? We appreciate you being here and working with us.
Thank you. I want to thank the city supervisors and managers for considering Tiscano and Associates Covenant Cleaning for this opportunity to step in and clean for the City of Saline. I also want to thank city council for giving me an opportunity just to talk about Tiscano and Associates Covenant Cleaning. We're a locally-based business, right on Bennett Street here in Saline. We've been in business since 2007, doing janitorial services. We grew very, very rapidly, but we went from just being a cleaning company, that's why Tiscano and Associates came into play. We also, we became a facility service company. We have engineers on our staff, and we handle 28 public schools in Detroit. We provide all the janitorial service and the boiler operation and engineering service for those schools. So I'm hoping that at some point, the city council will consider Tiscano and Associates Covenant Cleaning a local-based business to handle all the facility service. And we want to also be, give you an opportunity to pass along cost savings for the janitor related products that we can bring to the table, that the city can utilize our volume in purchasing JanSan products. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford. I'm going to have you hang tight there, and I'll open it up for questions, either to the applicant or to City Manager Campbell. Questions? Mayor Protem Rhodes?
This is a comment more for city manager. I noticed on page eight and nine, the other company's name is referenced, and so those need to be changed over to Tiscano. And there may be other places within the specification package.
Oh, sure. These changes will be made without objection. Thank you for bringing them forward. Mayor Protem. Additional questions? Mr. Girba, please.
Just to clarify for me, we've got this one in front of us that has Covenant Cleaning Building, and then now we're going with Tiscano. What was the difference in the path? Why was this, did I miss something? Why this name is in here? Is this the old company, or?
No, no.
I've heard three different company names. I'm just trying to figure out which is.
Yeah, well, and I'll start, and maybe if Cornelius would like to finish. But, so as I stated earlier, Covenant Cleaning, Covenant Cleaning Services, that was, again, that was what we knew them by, and so that's what we had originally put in, asked the city attorney to put in the documents. Cornelius asked, as my understanding, because they both, they're both registered names, but they typically use Tiscano and Associates more often than, than the other.
Yes.
Because of the expanded service.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so they made a request this morning to make that change in the contract from Covenant to Tiscano. And so I double-checked with city attorney's office, and they made the change without question, and so that's.
And for my own fact, since this is at the rec center, and there are a lot of children and everything, what type of background checks, and how do we handle the type of individuals that will be working there?
Sure. The same, the same policies, procedures that we do currently, they have to go through background and fingerprinting through the police department.
Okay. Thank you.
Additional questions, Mr. Girba?
No.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Dillon, please.
I just have a question. I noticed that the police department isn't cleaned on the weekends. Has that just never been the policy?
I don't know if, I can't remember, off the top of my head, I don't think that that has. I mean, we used, like I said, City Hall used to be five days a week.
Right.
And we reduced that to three days a week for cost savings. The reason we didn't reduce that in the police department is because of the boots and the boot traffic and that type of thing from the officers.
Well, that's why I was wondering why it's not cleaned on the weekend also.
I don't think, I don't know that we ever have. I'm not positive about that, but I don't think it's, there's, yeah.
We don't get the citizen traffic when we begin normally, and it hasn't been in the three to half years of time there. Mr. CEO, maybe if that's a bad.
Mr. CEO, do you care to comment on that, sir?
I recall, at some point, when we began to cut back services to save money, specifically, I don't recall what the cleaning schedule was during the time I was here.
I don't recall what the cleaning schedule was during the time I was here. Was an issue I never dealt with, that was Chief Bunton's purview, and I don't specifically recall. I know that we did curtail some service because of finances.
I'm here to jack. In 2009, when we first quoted the, the city services, in 2009, it was quoted seven days a week for the police department, but I don't know when that changed.
Thank you, please just comment.
We do have, I have any questions? It's not a clean, and so. Start back on David. We got, we still have.
Thank you.
Additional questions? I just have one, then. Assuming this passes tonight, how soon will RFPs go out to other companies to bid on this service for a more protracted extended period of time?
Right, so again, if, if we were to go forward, and the current companies to honor to the 15th, and then the short-term contract would go from the, essentially the 16th of February till June 30th, or thereabout. But, so, we figure we want to give ourselves enough time so we don't get rushed, but we're going to be working, I think we have our first meeting in, maybe next week, to sit down and start working on terms, and so probably, I'm going to say, end of February, first of March, probably.
Anything else for city manager Campbell, or for our guest, Cornelius Crawford? No? Okay. Cornelius, thank you, appreciate your time this evening. Any subsequent discussion on this motion? No? Okay. Well, then we'll proceed to vote. If there's nothing further, it's been properly moved by Mayor Portem Rhodes, seconded by Tahar, to acknowledge receipt and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Cornelius, thank you again. Have a good evening. The next two items are resolutions regarding pending legislation in the Michigan House and Michigan Senate. It's, first up is 16-19 Resolution opposing House Bills 4423 to 4427. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution opposing House Bills 4423 to 4427, which would impact the ability of local units to set speeds within their municipal, within municipal boundaries. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Moved by McClellan, you want to second that, Mr. Girbaugh?
Sure.
Seems appropriate, since you were the council member who first brought this forward. Resolution obviously speaks for itself, as most of you recall, again, it was council member Girbaugh who first brought this to our attention, and then at our last meeting, our state representative briefed us on the issue. It seems pretty cut and dry to me, but I would welcome any questions or comments that members of council have. Mr. Girbaugh, please.
I think it's important that we continue to voice our objections when these type of things come up, whether or not our governor will listen to us, which we know that happened last week. It's clear there is a process going in place that is not taking consideration of local enforcement and our own ability to govern ourselves at this point, so I'm hoping that we continue this, it might get through to our state legislatures, but that's a gamble that we need to continue to do. And I appreciate that council is looking at doing this.
Additional comments? Ms. Tahar, please.
Yeah, I, I would, I just want to say, somewhat emphatically, I concur with Mr. Girbaugh's comments. I don't hold out a lot of hope on any single particular issue and actually having influence on, on what's going on in Lansing right now, but I completely agree, it's very important to keep on objecting when local government is swept aside by the state government.
If there's nothing further, we'll proceed to vote, then. It's been properly moved by McClellan, seconded by Girbaugh, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And now we need to consider new business item 16-20, Resolution opposing House Bill 50 dash, or 5016. This will be a motion to approve or not to approve the resolution opposing House Bill 5016, which would require municipalities to reimburse telecommunications providers a portion of the relocation costs if the municipality fails to notify the provider at least one year in advance of the project that will require relocation of their lines.
Moved.
To approve, Mr. Seale?
Yes, moved to approve.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Again, this is pretty cut and dry, any discussion? I just have, and it's not an issue of substance, more of style, but as I look at these two resolutions, unless I hear objections from the dais, I prefer the format, and I would like to use the format that we utilized on 16-19. I think when we send it to the governor's office and to our elected officials, I think it's more compelling respectfully to have everyone on council sign it, as opposed to drafting it the way 16-20 is.
Okay.
People concur with that? Any objections?
Okay.
I don't think there's any issue with, this one can be sent, it's not that big of a deal. But I just think it's a more powerful message when the mayor and the six other council members sign a document of this nature. If there's nothing further, then we'll proceed to vote. It's been moved by Seale, seconded by Dillon, to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, the motion carries unanimously. And I would ask the clerk, if it's not too much of an inconvenience, if we have everyone stick around, can we get signatures on the first resolution immediately following the meeting? Excellent, okay. Very good. Well, then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. Commission, committee, and task force reports from council members. Mr. Girbaugh, please.
I just would like to remind everyone, this Wednesday, we'll be having an open hearing on the proposed rezoning of the property on Monroe Street. That's potentially going to be 17 townhomes or condos, I'm not exactly sure it is, which would be the property that's behind the homes on Monroe Street, backs up to Curtis Park, and also to the old Universal die plant, and also to the cemetery. But it's something we're looking forward, similar to like the other properties that Mr. Rhodes mentioned earlier, this would be a potential to have 17 additional homes, and would be a very nice addition to our city.
Absolutely, thank you. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. Ms. Tahar.
Yes, thank you. The Arts and Culture Committee met today, and it was our organizational meeting. We appointed Cindy Baxter to continue as chair, and Robert DePinaro as vice chair. We have a number of, of ongoing discussion items. We also had a visit from Mr. Matt Zahn, who presented his initial ideas about an art area locale for the city. It was not, he was not asking for our approval or endorsement, but he just, he wanted to give us an idea of what he's thinking about and to get initial reactions. The committee was interested in his, his ideas and encouraged him to continue gathering, communicating with various members of the community and gathering information.
Thank you. Appreciate the update. Additional committee, commissioner, task force reports. Know how about reports or other announcements? Mr. Seale, please.
I do have a question.
Please.
At a previous council meeting, we passed a resolution opposing Senate bill, and I don't recall the exact number wherein.
571.
Thank you. Any idea what the result was?
Yes, in fact, I emailed something out last week, and hopefully everyone received it. Did everyone receive a copy of an article from the Murders Newsletter I sent out while I was in Northport last Thursday?
I've been out of state myself, and I've not checked my email.
All right, well, you gotta, you gotta log on tonight and check it. It's actually a very good article. Interestingly enough, you have a resolution in front of you that was placed at your seat earlier this evening by Clerk Royal. Obviously, Senate Bill 571 has been signed by the governor, council member Seale. It is now Public Act 269, and was it the Michigan Clerks Association or MML who contacted you?
MML.
MML. So the Michigan Municipal League is still encouraging advocacy and action on this bill. Interestingly enough, council member Seale, and the article that I sent out addresses this. When the governor signed Senate Bill 571, he issued a statement, and he also issued a statement when he signed the ban on straight party voting, which is somewhat unusual. And in the statement, he said that he would like some things addressed and rectified in the statute. Now politely and respectfully to the governor, that struck me as being kind of silly, and quite frankly, backwards. If you had concerns about the legislation, you should have told the author, the cosponsors, members of the House and Senate, that you wanted the issues resolved before you considered, before you considered signing it. He chose not to do that, and as our state representative indicated at our last meeting, in addition to, to, to that, this bill went from approximately a dozen pages to in excess of 50 pages in the span of a half hour, was not given a proper vetting in committee, wasn't discussed, to my knowledge, at any length in committee. That is not indicative of, of an organization or an institution that follows best practices. So there are a number of issues wrong with this. Interestingly enough, and you can find this on YouTube or on PBS, this bill or this legislation, statute, was discussed at length yesterday and off the record with Tim Skubek. And the gentleman who was discussing it had a good line, which is that this legislation, not unlike so many pending bills in Lansing and things that have been passed and signed in recent years, is really a solution in search of a problem. I'm not really aware that there were any problems with municipalities habitually violating what's currently in statute, and this just makes the penalties more severe and limits our ability to educate our folks on, on pending ballot proposals. So I didn't mean to go off on a diatribe. I still encourage you to take a look at that email that I sent out late, late last week, and I support the clerk's efforts and MML's efforts to again, pass a resolution urging our, our members of the legislature to, to resolve some of these issues, have some substantive committee hearings, and maybe make some amendments to this statute.
Okay.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
No, no.
So is it your intent, then, to bring this forward at our next council meeting for consideration?
I can.
Okay. Does anybody have any objections to that?
Absolutely not.
I think that's fine.
Right, very good.
Unless you'd like to approve it tonight.
I think we can wait.
Okay.
It's already been signed into law, so.
Sure.
It's not, I mean, it's, it's pressing, but not as time-sensitive as it once was. Did you want to say anything else on that?
No.
No? Okay. Any other reports or announcements?
Brian, yes.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just want to remind everyone that Celine Main Street, the Winterfest, is coming up, January 22nd and 23rd. They've got a lot, I'm not sure exactly what all the activities are, but lots of activities, and people working hard for a fun weekend there, so.
Should be a great event, encourage everyone to come out. Anything else? Reports or other announcements? No? Well, let's move on to park connectivity. Parks Commissioner, former council member Peters, do you want to come forward at this time? We would welcome that. As most of you recall, I discussed, albeit briefly, the importance of park connectivity in my annual January State of the City address, and I mentioned former council member, current Parks Commissioner, Jim Peters, by name. He and I met about this issue probably a month back, and Mr. Peters has invested a significant amount of time on this issue, and it's an important one. I am obviously not looking for any action to be taken this evening, I'm, we're probably not even able to develop consensus tonight, but I think this is important. I want to begin a dialogue and discussion specifically about the connectivity between Milpon Park and Curtis Park, arguably our, certainly our largest and probably our nicest parks in the Celine community. So again, I didn't mean to steal any of your thunder, we appreciate your time tonight. Again, as I mentioned, at the start of tonight's meeting, you have some supplemental material that Mr. Peters compiled, and with that, Jim, I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thank you. So I'm here tonight to express an idea that we talked about the last Parks Commission meeting. As you know, we intend to connect Milpon Park with Curtis Park with a non-motorized trail. So when you exit Milpon Park heading south, and you're standing at US 12, you're only 50 feet away from Curtis Park, and the tendency is to cross right from Milpon Park, right there into Curtis Park. Right now, as we have laid out in our master plan, correct me if I have this incorrect, but right now, we're asking people, when you exit Milpon Park, to turn north and walk up US 12 by the hill where Legion's at, and cross over at Mill Street, and then come back down along the cemetery and go into Curtis Park. That's about 230 yards. So we'll be asking citizens to make a decision between 230 yards up and around, or to take the 80 feet trek across US 12. I think another pathway that we had suggested was down by the dam. So when you're exiting Milpon Park, you would turn west, and walk down past the dam, and then cross over into Curtis Park, west of the dam. That's about, that's well over 100 yards, and your, human nature being what it is, people may be just crossing, as they do now, right straight across from Milpon and the Curtis. So it's really kind of a public safety issue, as much as a parks issue. And also, when we use this, these curved street surface crossings that we're proposing, you're asking some people, especially young people, to make traffic decisions. You still have to cross a very busy two-lane US 12. One of the ideas that we had was, since we'll be doing work on US 12 anyway and tearing up the road, is there any possible way we could install a pedestrian tunnel at that time, using grant money or Parks funding money, or state money or something, I don't know. This is not a cost study, or even engineering study, it's just an idea we had. Tunnels, as you know, are very popular right now on non-motorized trails. They're very safe because the traffic and pedestrians don't even come in contact with each other. One, going from one part to another, you wouldn't have to get off your bicycle, you'd simply go right through the tunnel. It's a very safe way to do it. I understand it's quite a bit more expensive than the surface street crossing. I would hope that if we do use a surface street crossing, we would employ safety alleys, so you could only concentrate in one stream of traffic, get to the alley and concentrate on the other stream of traffic that you cross. As example, the last sheet in the package I gave you, that's right on carpenter road, you can see they have a safety alley there, and that is one common way that they do it. So if we do use a surface street crossing, it'd be nice if we employed a safety alley idea, so people can, you only have to watch one stream of traffic at a time. But if I had my wish list, boy, I'd like to see a tunnel right there, especially since we're digging up US 12, and maybe putting a pedestrian tunnel, it'd be a nice way to, it's safer to get the public from one part to another.
Before I open it up for discussion and questions from the dais, Ms. Scruggs, do you care to comment at all, or of course, Parks Commissioner Peters could comment? This issue was discussed at one of your most recent Parks Commission meetings. Do you want to elaborate on that?
No.
Jim? Okay.
Jim is doing a really good job of.
Okay. Jim, you want to address that real quick?
With the last meeting?
Yeah, what was discussed specifically at, at the Parks Commission?
A safer way to get across 12.
Okay.
Because we, when we put in our non-motorized trails, we're inviting people to cross US 12. And so if we're going to invite the public to cross 12, I think we need to give them the safest way to do that. And we do have two proposals in this plan, and they're both, you know, surface crossing, which is done, but there's a very big trend right now. Now, I have a couple of examples in your packet, up at Kensington Park, where they've employed tunnels underneath M36. Like I said, it's a very safe way to get the public from one side to another, they don't have to deal with traffic at all. And just an idea with that department, I said I would have expressed it at the council tonight.
Okay. We appreciate your time. Are there questions, comments for, for Mr. Peters?
Here he says, if the tunnel, if you had thought about the tunnel near the dam, or, you know, Parker Mills, it goes underneath Geddes, is that Geddes Road? Geddes Road? And there's a tunnel right, I mean, it's on the biodock really, but it's right along where the river is.
Mm-hmm.
If that would be something that we should be thinking about.
Like I said, these are prefab tunnels, these are sections that come in, and you simply put these sections, hook them together, and it's pedestrian tunnel, so it's not as substantial as a traffic tunnel. I don't know if you ever crossed from the golf course at U of M Stadium, you offer a pedestrian tunnel underneath Stadium Street, and they're around, they're here and there. And they are expensive, though, there's no question about it. But we thought that since we're already doing work on 12, would that help reduce some of the expense of putting in a pedestrian tunnel? It's sort of our chance, if we don't do it now, we may never get the chance again, because it may be many, many decades before we do work on US 12 again.
Ms. Rhodes, do you have a comment, sir?
Just that I concur with Mr. Peters' statement and, and the rest of the Parks Commission about the concerns with safety, because human nature being what it is, folks do tend to cross that Michigan Avenue in the most direct route, from Milpon to Curtis, or vice versa, not only adults, but also children. And I guess we're very fortunate that there hadn't been any serious accidents down there yet. The pending reconstruction of Michigan Avenue later this year should make that unintended crossing a bit safer, because the merging lane will, will be gone before people get down there far, so the merging lane will happen further east on Michigan Avenue. And I think that that would provide an opportunity for a pedestrian island to be placed in the. And I think that that would provide an opportunity for a pedestrian island to be placed in the center of Michigan Avenue. The concept for having the tunnel under or roadway over the top or something like that, I think those are all great, but they're definitely longer-term possibilities, and so we may be five, 10 years out before any of those things could happen. And in the meantime, we should do something to make it safer for individuals to cross over from our two most populous parks.
Absolutely. Anything, thank you, Mayor Protem. Anything further? Councilmember CEO, please.
Just some questions, I guess. We're kind of at the 11-plus hour for any modifications there. Aren't we to the US 12 project?
Yes.
Yes.
How, I mean, would that then put the entire cost on the city of Celine if we were going to try and do it at this time?
I believe so, but yeah, I mean, we've not asked, but I concur with the mayor as far as even permission to even do it in their roadway, I mean.
I mean, other US trunk lines, or I mean, the US trunk lines, the Michigan trunk lines have been obviously crossed by this means, M-36 and so on, but I would imagine it's a significant additional cost.
Absolutely.
Beyond what's already been anticipated.
Right. I would anticipate, even if they did allow it to be added, that it would be total, it would be 100% city cost.
Yeah. Is there any concept at all of what that cost might be?
No, I really don't. This is not a cost study. I just, I know the tunnels are expensive. It's almost, it's also an opportunity, that's where the Parks Commission's come from. When would our next opportunity come to, you know, to address a tunnel? Or maybe at this time, when they do the roadwork, could they do some kind of upfront prep for a future tunnel, maybe a thicker mat or something of some type? I don't know. I just, we just feel that right now as it stands, the tendency is going to just shoot the 50 feet across from Curtis to Milpon, instead of going up to Mill Street and crossing or going down to the dam and crossing, human nature being what it is, so.
I certainly understand, and when I lived on the west side of town, I saw people try to make that crossing on the surface many times, running with fishing poles and picnic baskets and small children and everything else. So, I concur that it's not a good situation, but I'm not sure that the time hasn't already passed for us to consider it as part of the current US 12.
Well, let me say this, Councilmember CEO, and I'll echo a number of sentiments that were shared by Mayor Protem Rhodes. I agree that at this juncture, and I expressed this to Mr. Peters when we first met, that it is probably not feasible to, to become advocates for a tunnel to connect Curtis Park and Milpon Park at this time. But I do think it's absolutely critical that we have a long-term vision as it relates to the connectivity of all of our parks, these two specifically. And as is, and as is addressed in some of the material that Mr. Peters distributed, there are a number of ways in which we can enhance the walkability, connectivity, and safety between those parks. And I wanted to begin the discussion, the dialogue tonight, and get us thinking about that. So, really, I invited Jim here, and he was obviously gracious and accommodated my request to start a conversation. Anything further? Ms. Dillon, please.
The outlines where you have path, are those going to be natural paths, just, or are they paved paths?
The path through two parks.
What do you envision those to be?
Oh, they could be everything from asphalt to concrete, probably crushed limestone like you have now that goes from the depot up to the library. That's a non-motorized trail.
And would that path carry all the way in through to Milpon?
Yes, our long-term goal would be to someday connect Milpon with Curtis with Salt Springs and Wilderness, connect all the parks together. So, say you could ride a bicycle through all the parks or walk or hike.
So, you're looking more of a like non-motorized path width versus just a walking path?
Yes, just like you have now from the library to depot, that type of a walking path. People do cross now, and it's a little scary sometimes.
Good. Anything further?
Where is, I can't remember, but where does that island on the west side of town stop? In front of the cemetery, correct? So, the other option would be for them to cross, you know, in front of the cemetery in the island, in the Michigan Ave plan?
They're asking people to walk up from, say, Milpon up to Mill Street and cross over by the cemetery and walk down that side of the road and go into Curtis that way.
And then come back to the park.
But I'm saying, if we do go with a surface crossing, I think it'd be nice if we had a safety alley.
But there is already an island going to be in front of the cemetery, correct?
I don't know. Is that true?
That's where, okay.
Yeah, by Mills.
And don't get me wrong, I think that that, it's important to have an island there, but I tend to agree with Mr. Peters' assessment that if someone is near the dam at Milpon Park wanting to cross Michigan Ave to access their car or the park amenities at Curtis Park, realistically, are they going to go all the way up to that island and come back down? Are they going to try and risk it and sprint across US 12 in that vicinity?
You can build it while they use it, yeah.
Right. Anything further? Ms. CEO, please.
Just a thought, a wild thought, but just a thought. There's already a mill race that crosses under Michigan Avenue, further west of the river current now. Is there any way to adapt that structure?
I don't know. Let's get down and look at it sometime. I walked down, looked at it myself, I'm not sure what the codes are or what would be applied there. But you're right, that is a bioduct, I mean, that is a way, it's a current way. You may have to employ some type of catwalk or something. But again, I'm trying to make it easy for, say, someone to bicycle. If you have to negotiate stairs, you know, stairs or ladders on a bicycle, or you've got little ones until or something, it makes it pretty difficult. That's why the bridge up and over doesn't really work that well, because no one's going to take a bike and go up four flights of stairs, cross it, come down four flights of stairs, where the tunnel is pretty clean, straight through, straight shot. And I know it's late in the game for construction-wise and schedule-wise, but we talked about the commission, I thought, well, let's take a shot.
Anything further? Mr. Peters, thank you. We'll continue this conversation and dialogue in the future. If you wouldn't mind, Jim, sticking around, there are a few things I wanted to address with you after the meeting, if you've got time. Okay. And again, we appreciate you being here tonight to talk about park connectivity, specifically Milpon and Curtis. Last, but certainly not least, is an update on our strategic plan. You want to give a brief overview, Mr. Campell?
Very brief, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, just a couple items since the last time I reported. Under Goal 2, Community Life Development, Objective 2, Reconstruction of US 12, one-year task, continue working with the MDOT, URS, Celine Main Street. And I participated this past Saturday morning with Celine Main Street as they call their master planning, working with the groups for the business retention and the promotions and the communications groups. So, we had a great, great discussion, great meeting on that. And then, Goal 3, Infrastructure, Objective 3, Sidewalk Maintenance. And just an update that the status of the current contract with the grinding, the first phase, if you will, of the sidewalk repairs is approximately 75% complete. So, you may recall that this project, the plan would be that they would finish this fiscal year, so sometime between now and June 30th, and certainly with the milder weather, the milder winter, they've been able to continue to work. But I believe they're about done if they haven't kind of closed the doors for the winter months and be back in the spring, so.
Thank you, Mr. Campell. Mr. Gierba, please.
Just a couple of discussion items, but one follow-up on the US 12. Do we have any idea when they're going to do the bidding, so that we have any idea when we would actually start the construction?
Well, again, the target is April. They'll probably award it in March, first part of March is when they'll award the bid.
Okay. Has it been published or released or anything?
I don't, I'm not sure if it has or not.
Okay. The other side issue I had was, I've been noticing where we've been putting publications in the, what is it, the Sun-Eagle or whatever for our minutes, and we're down to just barely a paragraph, and it recommends everybody look at our website. I notice other townships and other ones still put a kind of a synopsis in there. I'm a little concerned that we're got to the point where we're just pointing people to go to the website. It seems we're not being very forthcoming to individuals if we're going to go that narrow. And I'd like to talk with council whether they believe we should have more of an expanded summary or something that's a little more communicative to the public. When I go online, you have to go through four, I think it's four, maybe five clicks to get down to our agenda, scroll through it, and you have to have a computer that's basically well enough to open up the PDF. I'm just not thinking we're being as accommodating as part of our strategic plan, which was communication, unless we are really providing that. And so, just kind of an idea for discussion as to how we could better provide them, not a book like we used to, but maybe something that's a little more, I don't know what the cost is, but I know that that paper seems to be pretty much the communication tool for every one of our governmental units in the area.
Can I respond?
Please.
One of the reasons that we went to that was I had gone to a Clerks Institute, and they were recommending that you get people used to going to a website like what I've been putting in, because our newspapers seem to be dwindling away, and that way, even if the newspaper were to go away, that the website would still be there. We can obviously put it in the newspaper and put in the publication. This was just a cost savings, and it was recommended by the Clerks Association that we try to get the residents used to going there. So, that's why.
And I assume that was probably part of it. It was just that there's so many other ones that are out there, and until we, I don't have a problem having that on there, but I think we still have, now that we have this new publication, it has replaced the weekly, and there's just nothing out there that I think people see in other, other than logging in. And so, our older citizens or whatever that may receive that paper just don't have the ability to understand what we're actually doing. And I just feel, since what's happening in Lansing, we need to not discourage our communication, we need to be encouraging it.
Well, let me say this, and actually, this is the first that I'm hearing about this. I would, I would be in favor of something a little bit more robust and detailed. It doesn't have to be 10 or 12 paragraphs, but something on par with what we did five years ago. For the benefit of those who do not have email, do not have regular access to the internet, or maybe are not particularly computer literate or savvy. In addition to directing people to the website, which I think is important, if there are no problems with doing what I'm about to recommend, and I can't, I don't perceive that there are, I think we should also indicate where people can watch council meetings online apart from Channel 18. Many people like myself who do not have Comcast, therefore, I can't access Channel 18. So, if I wanted to view a council meeting, I would have to go to Vimeo, is that correct? But there are things that you pick up from a council meeting when you watch it, when you watch it in video form, that you simply don't pick up from reviewing copies of minutes or agendas. So, I'm in favor of something a little bit more detailed, directing them to the website, but also indicating where they can view the video, both on Channel 18. And I think Channel 18 has a semi-regular schedule of when they show the council meetings, but in addition also where they can access the council meetings on Vimeo. But how does the rest of council feel about this?
I concur with your statements. I had not thought about that either, and I appreciate Councilmember Gierba bringing that up. I believe that we should provide some more information in a written format and then refer people to the website and Vimeo site and Channel 18.
Right. Okay. Everyone in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Please.
Yes, I would say, especially in light of the news today about what's happening with M-Live and the slashing of staff there, the basic idea of directing people in whatever print publications we still have access to, to other sources of the same information is really important, because who knows how long that source will be available. And I also agree with directing or offering people a number of options where they can go.
Okay. Very good. I think we have agreement then on that. Okay? Anything further?
You want to mention your coffee hour this morning?
Oh, just, yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem Rhodes. Well, I first thank you for participating and helping, but I had a very successful, well-attended coffee hour this morning. Actually, I think a quorum of council was there, including Mr. Rhodes, who talked about the Celine Nature Preserve and Henni Field. Ms. Dhar was there, Ms. Dillon was there, and Ms. McClellan were also there. Good discussion, a number of good questions, and met some new, interesting people. In fact, one woman who just relocated from France, who had some interesting thoughts and observations. And as I mentioned today, I'm committed to doing those again, and we'll probably change the day of the week, the time and the location, but anticipating doing another one at, in either mid or late March. If there's nothing further. Last, we come to our second public comment period. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question of city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested, but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments?
My name's John Heller, 213 Sheffield, and I was at Brian's coffee this morning, and I asked him, and I don't want to particularly beat up on the subject, about why a independent law enforcement agency wasn't called in to investigate the allegations of rape by a police officer. And he directed me to, basically to Mr. Hess's report, and I said that I didn't think that was independent, since you paid him. And he directed me to the charge to Mr. Hess, which he pointed out, I haven't read. However, I don't believe that I really need to read it, because I think money talks. And I think if you pay someone, it's not possible for that person to be independent. And I would make an analogy to the James Holmes trial in Colorado, his murder trial. And if anyone doesn't know who James Holmes is, he's the one who shot some people in a theater there. And during his trial, there was testimony from four expert, independent psychological experts. Two of those experts said that Holmes was sane at the time he did the shooting. Two of those experts said he was insane. The only difference between those experts was who they were paid by and who they worked for. The two who said he was sane worked for the prosecution, the two who said he was insane worked for the defense. So, I think anytime you pay someone for an expert opinion or an independent opinion, a lot depends on who's paying them. And you paid Mr. Hess, and I think Mr. Hess found what he thought you wanted him to find, and I think he ignored what you wanted to ignore. And besides the fact that, I don't think that you can have an independent expert that you pay, there's also the big contradiction that you called in an independent law enforcement agency to investigate bribery allegations made against the BPW director and against a DPW employee, and you didn't do that with a probably more serious allegation of a rape by a police officer. And I think that you need to explain that contradiction and not use an independent report as an excuse, which I can't believe is independent based on the analogy I just made. And unless that contradiction is explained, I think there's always going to be something fishy about how that rape allegation was looked at. Thank you.
Are there additional citizen comments? There are no additional citizen comments. Well, is there any other business to be brought before civilian city council this evening? No, then please note that our next meeting is on February the 1st at 7:30. We have our strategic planning session on the 5th and 6th in the Brecken Room. The staff of the Celine District Library has graciously provided that space to us. And then, our next, our second meeting for February will be on the 8th of the following week at 7:30 PM. Again, there are no absences to excuse this evening, so I would seek a motion to adjourn at 9:19 PM.
Subdued.
Thank you, Councilmember Gierba. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, this meeting is adjourned.